The hour of seven o'clock hasn't arrived, I will call the council to order. Let the roll reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. We're going to begin our meeting this evening with a tribute, and I'm going to go right over to this podium here. Well, good evening, everyone. We're going to start tonight's meeting, you'll notice on the agenda that we're going to recognize some very, very special people in the city of Hastings. You know, Hastings has a deep tradition and outstanding military service. It's beginning started with the formation of the First Minnesota Regiment in 1861. The First Regiment and the nation offered to President Lincoln's call for volunteer troops after the Fort Supner engagement. Minnesota was the first state and the First Regiment was the First Regiment offered for the Union cause. Many Hastings men were part of that regiment that graced the shores of our levee. Since that time, men and women have answered the call to serve our nation from our Hastings area. And tonight, we honor five very special Hastings men who recently were awarded the Congressional Gold Medal in Washington DC for their bravery and service as part of an elite commando force during World War II. The Congressional Gold Medal is the highest civilian honor bestowed by the United States Congress. In fact, the very first Congressional Gold Medal was given to George Washington in 1776 by the Continental Congress. The men from Hastings who were awarded this precious award on behalf of a grateful nation were Francis Brooke, Dale Hamilton, John Hankus, George Hild, and James Moore. We honored tonight to have in attendance Mr. Hankus himself and family members of Mr. Francis Brooke, Mr. Dale Hamilton, and Mr. George Hild. The citizens of Hastings, by expression of its city council, would like to formally congratulate and thank these five special men by proclamation. And we will read the proclamation, I'll have Councilmember Vaughn begin that. Councilmembers, you have it before us, if you could each take a paragraph. And Councilmember Vaughn, you ready to start?
Whereas the First Special Service Force was an 1,800-member force of elite commandos activated on July 9th, 1942, as a joint Canadian-US force during World War II and...
Whereas, following extensive training and rugged conditions atop the peaks of the Rocky Mountains, former lumberjacks, trappers, mountaineers, and miners honed their skills in skiing, rock climbing, and demolition and...
Whereas the First Special Service Force completed its first mission in 1943 and played a key role in the 1944 liberation of Rome from German forces and...
Whereas, the brigade is the procure of modern special forces such as the Green Berets, Delta Force, and the Navy SEALs, and these men were part of our country's greatest generation and helped secure the freedoms and liberties we all enjoy and...
Whereas, on Tuesday, February 3rd, 2015, in Washington DC, a Congressional Gold Medal ceremony was held to honor members of the First Special Service Force and...
Whereas, five residents of Hastings were honored, they included Francis Brooke, Dale Hamilton, John Hankus, George Hild, and James Moore.
Now, therefore be it resolved, that the city council of the city of Hastings do hereby proclaim, congratulations and celebrate, First Special Service Forces members Francis Brooke, Dale Hamilton, John Hankus, George Hild, and James Moore, and thank them for their service to our grateful country, proclaim this day, 17th day of February 2015. What I'd like to do is ask the family of Mr. Francis Brooke, come up. I think that's his daughter Kate, her husband Mark, sons Colin and Nathan, come on up. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say a few words on behalf of your father.
I'll be short, but thank you very much. It's an honor to hear all this recognition on behalf of my father and to represent my family and to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you give me a moment? Way to go, Brandon. Next, I would like to ask Ray and Gary to come up, and Barb and Mary. Anybody who wants to come up, on behalf of the family, come on up. Thank you for being here tonight and representing your father. Gary or Ray?
Well, thank you very much, and like I said in the paper when they interviewed me, I didn't even know my dad was in the war until I was about 10 years old, and he was coming out of the shower and had a big hole in his leg, and I said, "What's that all about?" He wouldn't say anything. So I asked my mother, and she said, "Well, I got shot in the war." And I said, "What war?" And I didn't even know he was in the war. And then, when Ray and I were kids, he took us out to the country club here at the golf course, and he put some skis on us and made him ski down, and you know, we fell all the time and stuff, and I thought, "Well, you tried, Dad." And he went straight down the hill and go, "Where'd you learn all that?" And he said, "Ah, don't want to talk about it." But then I found out from my mother that they taught him how to ski out in Helena, Montana, where they did their training, so I didn't know he was even in the war at the time. So, most of the information I got was from my mother and not from him. And as time went on, I wish, you know, he passed away when I was 18, Ray was 17 at the time, and I wish I would have had more time to talk to him now about what happened and what he went through. But, again, it was a mystery to me until, you know, I found out that he had this big hole in his leg and found out that he was in a war. So, but thank you very much for honoring this, and I'm sure he's up there in heaven thanking you people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Ray. Sure. Ray?
I just want to add that we didn't know about the letter that was sent to his parents by his commanding officer, and he said he would bring him home alive, and he did. But Dale passed away at a very young age, but he was proud of his family and his time in the military. Thank you.
And next, we have the special honor of having Mr. John Hankus here himself, right before us, and I'd like to present you, John, with the proclamation. John has just given me the list of Congressional Gold Medal recipients, which will now include the special forces and the five members here from Hastings. Thank you, John, appreciate that very much. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, we're good? Okay? And is Monica here? Oh, okay, okay. Hi, Monica, how are you? That's your daughter. Okay, you must be Candace. Are you Candace?
Yes.
Well, welcome, we're very glad to have you here. Candace is George Hild, is George Hild's daughter, and thank you for being here, I want to present you this proclamation. Would you like to say anything? Okay, that's okay. Thank you for being here tonight, appreciate it. And James Moore's family's in California, and we'll be forwarding the proclamation to his family in California. Thank you for everyone for being here, and thank you for the service that John and the members and the families that are here tonight, they've made us safer, gave us freedom in the world, and part of the greatest generation. So, thank you very much. The next part, we're going to have, I'm going to introduce Chief Schut, who will introduce our new firefighters to the city of Hastings. And we'll wait just one second for those who need to go to be able to do so. Thank you for everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Hastings Fire Department is a combination fire department, operates on a regular daily basis with both full-time firefighters and paid-on-call firefighters. We've had a longstanding working relationship with our paid-on-call firefighters over the years. They provide an numerous amount of hours and service to not only the citizens of Hastings, but to the 35,000 residents that we protect within our fire service area. Covers the city of Hastings, the city of Vermillion, and then the five surrounding townships that we cover with. So, we're very proud of our paid-on-call firefighters, and they do an excellent job within our organization. In 1975, we had 26 paid-on-call firefighters in our organization responding to just over 700 calls a year for service. Over the years, that number has increased a little bit with our call volume, but at the same time, we've lost a number of paid-on-call firefighters through attrition, retirement, and so forth, to the point where in October of 2014, we had 29 paid-on-call firefighters. We'd just broken the 3,200 calls a year volume. So, calls had greatly increased over the years. At the same time, we had started a hiring process to backfill the open positions of paid-on-call firefighters. And that process started in the fall of the year, a very rigorous process. I'd like to thank Assistant Administrator Julie Flotten for her involvement in the process, it was very valuable, and I thank you for that. We started out with about 40 applicants, and through a rigorous testing process, we came up with 12 applicants that proceeded on to be hired on January 3rd of 2015. Two of those, Mike Christensen and Keith Schulte, had certifications and prior experience. We put them through a mentoring program in early January, and on January 10th, they hit the street and have been actively involved in our daily operations since then. The other 10 remaining candidates that are here tonight started their training on January 5th, and presently in firefighter one class up at Century College in White Bear Lake, with an expected completion date of early May. And this time, sometime this spring, we will get them going in a mentoring, responding partnership, and responding to calls, and then as soon as they get their firefighter one certification, we'll continue that training further. After the firefighter one training, we'll be doing emergency medical training this summer with the same group of people. So, I'd like to invite them up here. Steve Perez, Steve's one of our new firefighters. Alan Gaylor. Alan has a family tradition of public safety. Alan's dad was a previous police reserve with the Hastings Police Department, as was Alan, and Alan's also working as an EMT down in Cannon Falls for their ammo service. Bethany Sharfy. Bethany has some family experience in public safety. Ranier Steen Camp. Ranier brings in a lot of knowledge and construction background to our organization, we're very happy to have him. John Jamison. Tom Riley Trom, I'm sorry, Riley Trom. James Molder. Joe Saski. Justin Lentz. And David Bauer. You may recognize David, David also wears a Dark Bull uniform on Hastings on his full-time job as an officer. Over the years, we've worked with David on a number of calls, and always very appreciative of his service. So, I'd like to welcome these guys to our organization, to the city of Hastings.
Thank you, Chief, and I just want to say to the new hires, welcome. Thank you, congratulations. You will find your experience, I think, very gratifying, and we really need you. We need you more than ever. And the safety of our residents and our citizens depend, in a lot of ways, in your hands. And knowing some of your background and reading up on all of you, I don't think I've ever felt safer. So, welcome aboard, we appreciate all the hard work that you're going to be doing here in Hastings Fire Department, and we look to you as our first line of defense for safety. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, last but certainly not least, we are losing a member of our family tonight. Tom Montgomery, who began his employment with the city of Hastings in 1984, is retiring. And Tom, can I ask you to come up here a little bit? We're going to read a proclamation, but I'd like to give a statement first, and then we'll read the proclamation council. Tom has been employed by the city for over 30 years, and was first appointed Public Works Director in 1991, our very first Public Works Director. Tom has made an incredible impact on our city organization. Thomas has throughout his career demonstrated exceptional leadership and organizational skills that were vitally important in guiding our Public Works Department. In the past 25 years, Hastings has grown by over 10,000 people in population, it nearly doubled the number of utility services, and miles of streets. Tom's leadership and cross-training of staff, use of best management practices for maintenance operations, and early adoption of technical improvements has allowed our Public Works Department to manage that substantial growth. For example, the department's staff levels are just a couple of positions more than the staff levels were 25 years ago. This is the kind of efficiency that our residents and city council members have come to appreciate and respect. Another one of Tom Montgomery's excellent qualities is his ability to anticipate future challenges and address them. As a thoughtful leader often does, he has brought exceptional vision to the department that benefits our residents. Tom successfully met increased water quality regulations by implementing innovative store water quality treatment programs into our city's street and utility construction programs. In 2006, Tom advocated and put into action the construction of a nitrate removal water treatment facility. Moreover, in analyzing future needs, Tom worked with his department's staff and planned it 2008 in addition to the Public Works Facility. Tom has been able to look to the future and guide decisions that have met our fiscal and planning goals. Tom's service was invaluable after the 2001 flood, which flooded our city's hydro power plant. In response to that catastrophic event, Tom led the city's effort and project and construction management on a two-year, $4 million repair of the facility. He negotiated and coordinated items with FEMA to bring that project to a very successful conclusion, and today that hydro plant is paid for happily, right, Tom? And providing a vital revenue stream to the city of Hastings. He has developed a strong public outreach and communication program with our annual street and utility construction activities, which brought citizen confidence in the process and the final product. No easy task when projects like these involve monetary assessments. Furthermore, in the spirit of cooperation, Tom assisted our Parks Department in planning, designing, and managing construction of almost 28 miles of trails throughout our city. Because of Tom's commitment to Hastings and its citizens, he was recognized by the American Public Works Association Top 10 Public Works Leader of the Year, not the top 10 in Minnesota, the top 10 in the nation. Tom's contribution to our city and quality of life has been immeasurable. He has set a standard of excellence. His dedication, leadership, organizational skills, and ability to articulate a vision to improve operations and complete capital projects is immense. I, my fellow elected officials on the city council, and other city staff members are very proud of you, Tom, proud of the work that you have accomplished for us and the people of our great city. Tom, we wish you the best of luck in your retirement, and in honor of that, we're going to read the following proclamation. And I promise you, I'll give you a chance to say something. So, Councilmember Brooks, would you please lead us in the proclamation for Tom?
Whereas, Tom Montgomery has served the city of Hastings since January 9th, 1984, beginning as the Assistant City Engineer and advancing to become the city's first Public Works Director and...
Whereas, since 1984, Hastings has grown by more than 8,000 residents, necessitating countless expansions to the city's infrastructure systems, for which Tom Montgomery has played an integral role in planning, constructing, and ensuring proper maintenance and care and...
Whereas, during his tenure, Tom Montgomery has provided outstanding leadership, integrity, and professionalism in support the changing needs of the community of Hastings and...
Whereas, Tom's contributions to the city and to the public works profession have been heralded by local and national professional organizations, most notably in being named to the list of the American Public Works Association's Top 10 Leaders of the Year in 2013 and...
Whereas, Tom Montgomery is retiring from the city of Hastings effective February 20th, 2015 and...
Whereas, while serving the city of Hastings for over 31 years, Tom Montgomery has shown tremendous dedication and commitment to the city of Hastings organization, to his coworkers, and to the community at large.
Now, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hastings that Tom Montgomery is hereby recognized and thanked for his 31 years of commendable service to the city of Hastings, that Tom is wished the very best in his retirement, and that this Thursday, February 19th, 2015, is hereby proclaimed Tom Montgomery Day in the city of Hastings, adopted by the city council of the city of Hastings the 17th day of February 2015. Tom, thank you very much for all you've done for us.
Well, you all know I'm not very long-winded, so I'll keep this short. Thank you, thank you very much. I want you all to know, it's been 31 years, it's been a tremendously fulfilling career, and I've enjoyed it. I can honestly say I've enjoyed my 31 years here, all the way through. And that's in part, in no small part, to the leadership on this council. I have nothing but the highest respect for you. You all are up here, you're not single-issue candidates, you're up here to better the city, and you work together and you respect each other, and that leadership just flows downhill to all the staff, too. You set a tremendous example, and I want to thank you. And I want to thank you for giving a young, wet-behind-the-years engineer a chance. Throw me in the deep end, see if I swim. Let me learn, let me grow into the position. Couldn't do it without the chance and without your support. And then, and then the staff. I've been blessed with just tremendous people to work with, top to bottom, throughout the 31 years. There's a reason why Hastings has such a great staff. It's in part by the leadership by the council, by the stability of the council, and more importantly, Hastings is a special place, and it always will be for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, council, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on February 2nd, 2015. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Council items to be considered, is there any council items to be considered, council? Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda, what's your wish? Councilmember Alangi makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to awarding of contracts, a public hearing. Our first public hearing tonight is to amend City Code 93.05, liquefied petroleum tank storage, and we'll have Chief Schut introduce that item. Welcome to the meeting, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Current ordinance in the city of Hastings allows for the filling of propane cylinders in the industrial park and in the C4 district, which is the area of 33rd Street on the south end of Hastings. It allows for the transfer from a bulk storage tank into your typical 20-pound cylinder that you typically see in a gas grill at your residential dwelling. Over the last couple of years, we've had some businesses in town that have inquired about the, what's commonly known as the exchange program, where you can drop your cylinder off and grab a full one, pay for it, and take it back home with you. Staff was directed by council in the fall of 2014 to take a look at possibly expanding our ordinance, along with Planning Director John Hinsman, and the Fire Department and some city staff. We took a look at what other ordinances are out there in the surrounding communities, and what could be viable within the city of Hastings. We came back to the planning committee of the council in early December and then in January of this year, and proposed a ordinance change within the existing ordinance to allow the exchange cylinder program at businesses within not only the C4 district, but to expand it into the C3 district, which would incorporate Vermillion Street, south of 10th Street to the edge of town, and then also Highway 55, the C3 district starts at about, just a little east of Westview Drive, and taking that to the west end of town. The first reading was held at the previous city council meeting, and tonight we're here for a second reading and a public hearing.
Thank you for introducing that item, Chief, appreciate that. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Public hearing is now open, is there anyone here who wish to speak to the City Code Chapter 93.05, petroleum tank storage? Anyone here who wish to speak to that issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council will take this issue before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Alangi makes a motion to adopt. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Brooks. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to that motion. Councilmember Alangi.
Thanks, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank the chief and John for preparing this. I just want to thank Councilmember Balsinick for bringing it forward. I believe a constituent of resident business was first interested in this and kind of wondering what we could do to make this possible, and we looked at it carefully from every angle, thanks in no small part to your initiation of this issue. But the planning committee through two iterations to the end of last year, and then new planning committee is the beginning this year, have looked at this, caught up with the issue, researched it, and really appreciate the good work that staff put into it. We have a nice solution here that both makes it a little bit easier for businesses to operate like they do elsewhere in the Twin Cities, in a very sensible and organized fashion, at the same time presents no major risk to public safety. So, we're really, really happy with the end product here. Thank you again, Chief, and thank you again, John.
Welcome. Thank you. Is there any further comment or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll have a public hearing in regards to the 2015 street improvement project. Nick, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Hicks, thank you, council members. Bear with me for a moment, I think I have to re-fire the projector up here.
Isn't technology a wonderful thing?
It is.
Be good, I heard noise.
Heard a noise. Thank you. Here we go, now it's coming on. There, that's better. A second to brighten up here. Tonight, for the council's consideration, we have our 2015 street improvement project, and in general, that project encompasses all of Ball's Drive between South Frontage Road and the middle school, Pinecrest Elementary grounds on the east end, and then a couple areas of South Frontage Road, essentially at either end, between Westview Drive and then on the east side at Highway 55. Just a few shots of the existing conditions out there, this is from... This is from Balls Drive. You can tell that we've been putting an awful lot of attention on pothole patching for this street over the last few years. It really looks like that pretty consistently throughout on Balls Drive. South Frontage Road really isn't any better. A couple of skim patches showing up in there and various other pothole patching that we've done. You can see there's some severe cracking in that photo right there. Here's more towards the east end of South Frontage Road. It's the patchwork quilt of blacktop that we've had to use to fill in some craters over there in recent times. So the key project features that we have for this program, number one is renewing the pavement. With that, what we would do is our reclamation process. We've used this extensively over the last five years, where we grind up the existing pavement, pulverize it, mix it in with the underlying base material, and then we'll grate off some of the excess and make room for a new blacktop surface that's built to today's standards, today's specifications. It's a little bit thicker and renew that surface. With that, the curb and gutter and most of the concrete is in good shape. This would be the first cycle, if you will, of reconstruction that's happened on these roads since they were originally built. So the curb and gutter and concrete tend to fare pretty well for a long time. That said, we still have broken panels here and there, heaved sections, cracked areas, and we would do spot replacement on all of that as we work through this project. There'd be a few storm sewer modifications with this. We've got some changes in a few curb lines, particularly on the eastern end of Balls Drive, where it's coming up on Linway and then east of that intersection as you go towards the middle school area. We also would have a reconfiguration of that very eastern end of Balls Drive, converting the space between Linway and the middle school into an area for a trail extension and a redone driveway area to the apartment complex that's on the north side of that intersection there. On the utility side of things, not a heck of a lot of work, but we would be getting into lining the sewer main lines in and through here. That's part of our goal for the entire system, citywide, to upgrade that to more of a plastic-type material. We can do that with the trenchless lining procedure. We've been doing this throughout various areas of the city over the last several years as well. Water system, really, really minor repairs, just a couple of adjustments on that and replacements to do. And then probably the most notable thing, the most notable change that folks would see are a couple of reconfigurations to allow for the extension of a trail section, as well as a bit of a modification at the intersection of South Frontage Road and Balls Drive. I'll show some graphics of that here. This is the major change that we would see in the way of pedestrian facilities. To the west of here, it's outside of the photo, but we would extend the sidewalk that is partially in that leg all the way between Conzimius Park and South Frontage Road. But from Conzimius Park on over to the middle school grounds, we have a new section of trail that would come in and connect to the system that's on the middle school grounds on the east end and the existing trail that's just to the west of the ball field in Conzimius Park, thereby completing an interconnection that runs all the way up into the Fourteenth Street neighborhood to the south and west of here and allowing for a grade-separated piece of the trail system. We've got a fairly good demand on that area for walking from schoolchildren, getting from that neighborhood, south and west, up to the school grounds. This would serve them and keep them from having to walk in the street. With that, we've got a couple of changes to the street configuration to allow for the space to install a trail, particularly on the block between Linway and Park Lane. In that area, the road would be narrowed down from its existing width of thirty feet to, or existing width of thirty-six feet, I'm sorry, down to thirty feet, creating a little more room there to install that trail. We'd have a bit of a taper on the end near the playground as that comes into that intersection with Park Lane. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the reconfiguration of the block or half-block that's just to the east of Linway into more of a green space and space in a shared space with a reconfigured driveway there to the apartment complex. Moving up to the west end of things, where Balls Drive comes into South Frontage Road, bringing that sidewalk on up and through there, we needed to be able to utilize the right-of-way space that the city has in that area. Currently, a piece of the parking lot for the restaurant that's there, Wyatt's Restaurant, encroaches into the right-of-way about eight or nine feet. And in order for us to fit the sidewalk in that space without relocating the street and also providing a proper boulevard and some clearance away from where the front ends of cars would end up as they park in that parking lot, we've got to shift that edge of the parking lot back to where the right-of-way line is right now. We would do that, wrapping a curb back out and around and providing a nice hard stop so that when you have bumper overhangs from cars that park in there, it wouldn't extend into the space where the sidewalk is going to be brought through there. Project funding side, this project is estimated to cost just a little under eight hundred thousand dollars. With the lion's share of funding coming from various public entity funds, the city sewer and water funds being about fifteen percent of that, we have mid-state aid money involved when it comes to the South Frontage Road portion. And then the city would issue bonds to cover the remaining portion of the public funding, three hundred and twenty thousand or so on that. Special assessments for this constitute about fourteen percent, or a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, roughly. There's just another way of looking at that eighty-six cents public funding and about fourteen cents on the abutting property assessments. On assessments, the purpose of the hearing tonight is really just to cover the project's scope and features. We'll be talking about assessments in about a month at the March sixteenth council meeting. Residents and landowners through the area will get a notification for that meeting as well, just like they did for this one. That'll be mailed out in about two weeks here in advance. On our project timeline, if we move forward with approval tonight, we'll work to complete the final plans and get that out the door for bids here in the next couple of weeks, opening bids probably in the latter half of March, and then moving for a contract award in April, starting construction in May. And we would expect this project to take six to eight weeks total to complete. It may even be quicker than that if we get favorable weather. So we'd look to wrap it up in midsummer. Just a little bit on our project communications campaign. This is something that we want to make sure to promote each and every year that we do a project. We have a multitude of different avenues that we issue construction information through. The big one, the one that folks seem to like the most, is our weekly flyers that we deliver to the project site, to a special mailbox. They can drop by on their way to or from their homes and grab those. We give a synopsis of what has happened leading up to that point in time and a forecast for the activities that are to come in the next week. We'll do things occasionally through the city's Facebook site, show some construction activities and photos on there, a little bit of an educational spin to that, just to explain the types of things that are happening and put that in the perspective of the big picture. We use our city website to post those same construction flyers, and folks can grab those on a digital format. And then we'll do door-to-door stops to each residence and building with special flyers for critical activities, things that might be more disruptive than the typical day-to-day work that's going on out there. And then finally, just want to make sure that folks know that the engineering department's ready and willing to answer questions and be available to help walk folks through what we're up to out there. We always encourage people to call in to our department hotline that's listed right up there, four eight oh-two-three-three-four. And then take a lookout for our construction management staff that's in the field. They drive red trucks. They have a nice city of Hastings logo on the side, so you'll know you'll be speaking with the right folks, right people if you walk up to one of those and grab those people when they're out there on the site. So that's what I have. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Hicks, for questions and open the public hearing.
Thank you, Nick, for introducing this project. And I will open up the public hearing. As we open this up, I just want folks to know that who are here to speak, if you have any questions, what we'll do is we'll write them down. Sometimes we get the same questions asked over again. And so we'll take your comments, any suggestions about the project. And if there's any questions, we'll write them down, and then we'll go back to staff to answer those questions. It's worked very well in the past, and we'll continue that tradition. I have now opened up the public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak on this project? Please come to the podium, give us your name and address. Welcome to the meeting, and we're very glad to have you here. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Justin Guyer. I live at eleven oh-one Park Lane, right on the corner. I would like, can I use a computer to pull up a PDF image off of a flash drive?
I don't know why not. John, do you need to assist, or... Or maybe we could put that on the...
Pardon me for a second. There you go.
All right, so first of all, I'm not opposing the addition of the trail from the east side of the school to the west side of Conzimius Park. I just have a little confusion why it needs to be on the south side of the road for multiple reasons. And so in the red you see here is where it's proposed or designed to be. I'm just proposing an alternate sidewalk location on the north side of the road for multiple reasons. First of all, there's a large number of children that do live in the apartment complexes north of Balls Drive that use the park majority, they're the ones that use the majority of the park. So that would give them more safe access to the park, I guess. There's also, it would serve the east side of Linway and north of Balls Drive, which is the apartment complex north of the proposed abandoned road. It's a fairly large apartment complex up there. And there's also more real estate between the apartment building on the north side of Balls Drive and the right-of-way line. So you can see here, from the corner of the building to the property line, we have approximately twenty feet. And from the corner of the two houses on the south side of Balls Drive, it's approximately eleven feet to the property line or right-of-way line. So from what I understand is this blacktop trail's going to be approximately eleven feet wide. So it's only going to leave about three feet between the right-of-way line and the edge of the blacktop. So really, we only have fifteen feet of green space between our house and this trail. So I know there has been some vandalism in the area, and this trail would just allow kids closer to our houses and just a little concern with vandalism and theft. If we do move it to the north side of the road as I propose, it would allow the people to be a little further away from the residential houses. It's also less of a cosmetic disruption on the residential side of the street. Anything north of Balls Drive is generally commercial or apartment complexes. So this proposal keeps this wide trail on the north side of the street. I would also recommend that a pedestrian crosswalk would be added from the apartment side to the south side of the road, where I have it labeled as pedestrian crosswalk needed. So I would also assume that you'd be adding a pedestrian crosswalk from the east side of Park Lane to the west side. Now, if that is how it has to be, then there'd be two pedestrian crosswalks right in that intersection. If we do use the proposed location, there'd only need to be one crosswalk that crosses from the north side of Balls Drive to the south side into Conzimius Park. I also, right before I came to the meeting, I'm sure most of you are aware that there's been a large berm built on the north side of Conzimius Park. And I understand it's for a five-hundred-year flood. Now, there's only approximately six feet from the edge of the curb to the edge of the berm. So if this trail is proposed to be roughly ten feet wide, I'd like to kind of know what they're going to do into that berm. So you could possibly build the whole trail on the north side of Balls Drive and then have one pedestrian crosswalk up by the Ball Diamond. There's a lot of green space between Balls Drive and the apartment complexes. And those buildings you see on the north side of Balls Drive are not residential buildings or even buildings that people live in. They're the back of a garage. So it's a lot less of an eyesore to the residential houses right on the corner there. It's, I also, obviously, just did a very quick cartoon drawing here, but it's really only about ten feet more of sidewalk to be added if you move it to the north side. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Guyer. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Anyone else who'd like to speak to this project? Please. Welcome to the meeting. We're very glad to have you here. Please state your name for the record and your address.
Kathy Slushler, eleven hundred Linway. So this is also my property, this trail. My husband and I, Wayne, it's our property this trail is going through. I'm opposed to this trail going through our yard. I agree with Justin that it should be on the north side of the street for several reasons. There are many children that live in the apartment building. And it would be better for them to be able to get right onto this trail that is at the apartment building and go to the park, which many, many children use, rather than cross the street to our side and then have to go to the park. It just seems safer for them. Because Linway and Balls Drive can be a very busy street with many fast drivers going down Linway. And also, coming from school, many of the children that come on that street are from the apartment buildings, so they can get onto the trail from school, be right there at the trails, going to your home at the apartments. A few go through the park, but it's very few. We've lived there for forty-six years. Very few kids go through the park after school. Mainly, they're from the apartment building. I just, and the vandalism is a big concern because in our years there, we've had people in our garage have stolen things, stolen things out of our vehicles, which we have to keep locked, which many people do. But they steal out of our yard. You can't protect the things in your yard. And having this trail so close to our house now, it's a concern for me. It's going to make me very nervous, and that's a big concern of mine. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this issue, Project Two Thousand Fifteen? Anyone else? One more time. Anybody else? Okay. Before I close the public hearing, though, I'm going to ask Nick to come up and, you know, that's probably the big question, the layout of the trail, its final design, being on the south side versus the north side rationale.
Yeah, the biggest thing for that is that we have a pre-existing section of sidewalk that's further west on Balls Drive. And that'll be connected on to with the new sidewalk portion of this. But the trail into the park and through the ravine that we just extended a couple of years ago is also on that side. This route would connect up with these things that are already pre-existing and on the westerly, southerly side of the road. And it would result in less intersection crossings or driveway crossings all the way through to the school area. It also... It also happens to be the side of the right-of-way at the eastern end of Balls Drive over here where we connect onto. So that, all those things considered, made for a more logical routing of the trail, connecting with things that were already in existence, and the way that it would line up, and the lessened number of driveway crossings that one would have to cross as they're using it.
Please, councilmember. Councilmember Alaji?
The public hearing comments. So, I mean, would there be, I get the alignment's nice, and I get that there's a bigger picture here that we're trying to follow. That said, the single crossing that goes from south to north, is there an additional cost that would come to that alignment? Or is it a matter of, I don't want to just call it aesthetics, I think you're trying to actually make sure people stay on the same side of the street, which has a certain value as well. Could you get more into what you see the costs of changing it as being, perhaps, either financial or otherwise?
We may end up with a sort of similar scenario in terms of narrowing the road down in order to avoid the right-of-way encroachment issue on that side with what we're left behind on the northerly side there, to give an appropriate boulevard space and then separation from the property line itself. The crosswalk component of it really is about a horse a piece there. We'd have an apron on the other side of the road, and those would line up with what we'd bring in by the playground there on the south side. And then, when we get further to the east, we're navigating across the driveway that we're reconfiguring for the apartment building, either in this fashion here or some variation on that, if that needed to change. Folks would have to cross over that then and navigate through there, either north-south or east-west in some manner. So those are the things that I see with that.
Is there any other public testimony that would like to be given tonight? Anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Okay, I will close the public hearing. What we'll do with that is we'll have the discussion here at council. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Nelson?
Nick, I'm assuming we have right-of-way on the north side of Balls Drive, so I guess we didn't talk about this in Operations Committee. I guess, I'm not sure as to why we didn't. It seems kind of like a logical thought, maybe, you know, move that sidewalk over to the apartment buildings. But we would have right-of-way over there, first of all, right?
Yes.
So that wouldn't be a question. Our trails are how wide when we build them?
They're 10 feet wide.
10 feet wide. And then we try to leave a 3 to 5 foot?
We'd like to have 5. Sometimes we'll neck down a little bit, less than that. In this case, I think we had a 4-foot space on the street side and about a 6-foot on the backside of it.
Sure. But if we took it over to the north side, we could make it a little bit bigger.
It may be similar.
Sure, okay.
It may be similar to this.
Obviously, then parking would have to switch if we did go with a proposal like that. Parking would have to switch to the south side of Balls Drive then for the...
If we ended up having to narrow the roadway down, yes, we'd propose a parking prohibition in that block there, depending on how narrow it got.
Correct, correct. Okay, thanks, that's all I had, Your Honor.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Nick, we're 36 feet wide from, starting at the frontage road on Balls Drive, and then on the east side of Park Lane, we narrow to 30 feet?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, does your drawing reflect that narrowing to 30 feet then? Okay. Okay. Just to clarify that, so we're all talking apples to apples on that. There is very nice drawing, and I'm very impressed with the detail that you have on it. Just understand that if we did vote to go with the engineering study, the street is going to be shifted a little further to the north between Linway and Park Lane. So you would have a little more yard there. But that being said, yeah, it never occurred to me, I guess we were just assuming we've got the sidewalk, we've got the trail, we're bringing it on down from the frontage road, and basically just keep it on that side. I don't know if we have a precedent or a policy that we try to keep our trails on the same side without shifting to the other side of the street and carrying on.
I don't think there's a policy per se. It would just be more of a best practice to keep it consistently on the same side and minimize the number of crossings back and forth to only intersection areas.
Yeah, the only concern I have is that the proposed crosswalk that's suggested here in the drawing is at the end of a curve. And I just worry a little about, I mean, we've got testimony that there are, we always hear testimony that there are cars driving through faster than they should be. A lot of people guilty of that, of course, but I don't know how to address that concern that if we have the trail on the one side and then at that curve, at that intersection, we have the pedestrian crosswalk to go across and then continue on to the east. Safety factor on that, I'm not even sure if you could address that at this point without doing a traffic study, monitoring how much traffic is going through, and checking with the police department to see what we've got on speeding tickets or, you know, monitoring vehicles going on through that intersection. So that's kind of a gray area there. I'm always concerned about safety with pedestrian crosswalks. We have a law in Minnesota, you stop for pedestrians in marked crosswalk areas. We don't do that. All you have to do, though, is go over to Wisconsin River Falls, drive through the campus, and screech your brakes as you're watching a college student using a pedestrian crosswalk. And nine times out of 10, the person screeching their brakes is a vehicle from Minnesota, not from Wisconsin. It's amazing how you cross a state line and the values change so much. Again, that being said...
It's still feeling like a Green Day fan.
Yes, as a matter of fact. And we should have been in the Super Bowl, but don't get me started on that. Then you're one bad call. No, I'm digressing. I want to keep everything serious here. Pardon me. So it just, bottom line is, I am concerned that if we put a pedestrian crosswalk in, I have a concern about safety. What could we do at that pedestrian crosswalk if we decide to go and shift the trail to the north side of Balls Drive? Flashing lights, a sign, pedestrian crosswalk, what can we do there? What are our options if we were to go ahead and...
Typically, our standard with a trail crossing in a mid-block would be the signage there. We still want to maintain that it's incumbent on the user and through good education from childhood on up that you still have to look both ways. The signs will not stop the car. They may call attention to the area. The vast majority of traffic, however, is going to be neighborhood traffic going by these each and every day. And when you have that, the tendency is that signs lose their obviousness, for lack of a better term. They blend into the background, and folks get on autopilot. And so the effectiveness curve kind of trends downward over time, so...
And I would assume that there might be a warning sign prior to that pedestrian crossing, pedestrian crossing ahead or something like that.
More recent installations, we've stood with, unless it's been a very high-volume area in advance, warning sign hasn't been put in. It's simply the one at the spot on either side, either coming from either direction.
I would have no objection to shifting the trail to the north side. There's obviously more density on the apartment building side of Balls Drive. Population shift, I know, I mean, just my own neighborhood, you know, for five years, you got little kids running around all over the place, which is great, and then suddenly, for five years, they're gone. You have no idea where they went. They grew up, I guess, and now we've got them back again. A whole new brood running around, which is great. So it's going to ebb and flow as far as that's concerned. But just the fact that the high density of the apartment buildings and the transient nature of apartments leads me to believe that there may be a continuum of children, more children on that side of the street than perhaps on the residential side of the street. It also does provide a way to get across the street to Conzamius Park. We don't have a pedestrian crosswalk there now, do we? So if we were to shift the trail to the north side, this crosswalk for pedestrians would be a good service for people coming into Conzamius Park. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the things I remember talking about in committee, though, was asking staff to confirm that we are connecting a trail that goes, that's built up through the woods up into 14th Street. And I've been contacted by residents that live up there because of the school system is not busing from that area. So they are walking themselves down. And if you look at Conzamius Park, there's a trail right through the middle of the park. That tells me they take the least path to resistance. And I see us, if we move to the other side, I just don't see the kids up in that area going to be using that. They're not going to cross across the street to get to that sidewalk. They're probably just going to stay on the street to finish getting to the connecting sidewalk at the school. So that, I just wanted to confirm with staff, part of a paved path like that, we are helping plow that trail to get those kids to school, because it's a school connection. And that was one of the questions I got from a resident is, the new trail that we have up through the woods, is that going to get plowed? Because they are walking all the way down. That's what I'm mostly, that's what I liked about our design, that's what I liked about what we talked in committee. Understand, there's some residents here that are going to see a trail next to their house that hasn't been there before, but we got to look out for, I'm worried about the residents that are up there that are walking down to the school and using the park. I mean, that's part of our trail system. One suggestion I would say is we need to, if there's a lot of kids coming out of the apartment complex heading to school, maybe the other side needs a sidewalk that connects right there. If that's the role, it's just trying to get them a sidewalk just from the corner over to the north side to get them that small patch job in there. Thanks.
Is there any further discussion? To move any further, we'd need a motion before the body. We do not have a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to go a staff proposal and to build the trail on the south side. I want to get my directions correct. As staff has proposed there, shown there on the south side of Balls Drive.
Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to approve as presented by staff. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Councilmember Schultz?
Your Honor, my comment was going to be about the way the new trail looks to be constructed, that the area that's green there, and the way it moves through, and then it ends there at Linway. And if we were to move the sidewalk to the other side, whoever's walking there is going to have to go kitty-corner, as we used to say in my hometown. And I don't like that kind of an intersection for children in particular. I think that gets them, and they will take the path of least resistance. I have found that out. And I think that that is something that's dangerous enough that I think it's a consideration that we should really take to heart, because that part makes me, I struggle with us setting up a situation like that. And I would assume, Nick, that the way that trail comes off then at Linway, there will be a crosswalk. Is that true?
As it's shown right here, we would have pedestrian aprons on either side of the street leading right directly across.
Okay. And if we, and my point is, is if we switched, we flipped everything to the north side, then that would cause, you know, if you wanted to stay with the sidewalk, you'd have to kind of direct the other way, and I just think that's kind of dangerous.
I'm sorry if I didn't explain it very well earlier. I think what we would see if we reconfigured from this rendition on the east side of Linway there, and my mouse isn't going to cooperate. Oh, there it is. We'd have to bring the trail up and across through here, across this driveway, and then it would end up somewhere in here. This entrance probably would shift south a little bit. You'd have another driveway to cross, then an intersection, then another driveway, and then the street over here.
Is there any further discussion to the motion? Councilmember Alaji?
Yes, building off that point, though, I mean, we're essentially, we're abandoning that piece of road, and we're turning it into kind of whatever we want here. And is it not possible, Your Honor and Nick, to take a driveway and make it go directly from Linway, just north of all that, and just cut right into the parking lot there? You know, if we wanted to make it so that it didn't, if we didn't have them crossing the driveway, we could make it so it didn't cross the driveway. We're kind of in charge. So I guess we can make it as safe as we want to make it and not that much cost. I'll admit, and I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion for an amendment just for the sake of testing it, because I think that it was very thoughtful citizen feedback, and, you know, it's not my ward, I get it, and so, I don't know if folks can... I promise the next time there's something in my ward, somebody can vote on amendment on something different from what I'm asking for. But I really do feel like it'd be a very good idea to pay attention to what the residents are telling us there. We have a large number of kids up on the top there who are already crossing the street. Part of what they're asking us to do is to say, why not make a crosswalk for them? And while you're at it, just put the sidewalk out there. It doesn't seem to me an overdue burden to take the pedestrian traffic and move it across to the north and allow those two private residences there to be able to then take and put whatever visual or physical barriers may be helpful to the kids to not cut across their property. We, speaking as a homeowner that has a sidewalk in front of their house, it's not the greatest thing in the world. It's okay, it's convenient. I wish there were fewer pop cans and other candy bar wrappers and stuff. We have a kids park nearby, too, doesn't have as much traffic as this, but it does come with some joys and some things that are less than joyful. And I don't see why we would, should have to, you know, purposefully put a thing there if we can avoid it and do so elegantly without a risk to safety. So I would propose an amendment to the motion in as friendly a manner as possible that would take that portion of the sidewalk, move it to the north side, and then adjust the driveway piece so that it did not cross the sidewalk, so that we didn't have that very valid concern that was just raised, brought up. That's my amendment, proposed motion.
Councilmember Alaji makes a motion to amend. The amendment is basically putting the sidewalk on the north side as proposed by the resident. Is that correct?
And adjusting the abandoned road design so that it does not cross the driveway.
And adjusting the design of the property.
I think that's an important point that was made. I want to respect that.
Is there a second to that amendment, that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Motion dies due to lack of a second. We'll go back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Councilmember Balsanik?
Well, can we stay, Nick, the question was asked earlier then. If we stay with the engineering staff proposal, could we not, for the sake of the apartments, put a sidewalk on the north side of Balls Drive that would go east and then hook up there? What I'm looking at is if we were to bring it down through here, so we're not crossing the driveway, but down through here and then going across.
Physically, yes, we can do that. The one, couple of things I want to note is that that discussion hasn't been had with the owners of the apartments. We certainly recommend being able to bring that back to them for their feedback. Secondly, we, we probably recommend then with that to cross Balls Drive rather than Lynn Way and get everybody who's crossing Lynn Way all at one spot rather than back-to-back crosswalks there?
Right, because you'd have a, you'd have a pedestrian cross on Lynn Way that's on the north side of Balls and on the south side of Balls, is what you're saying, right?
Come through here. Go here, go here and leave this as is.
So that's, yeah, it's, it's just a question, a question. It's not a motion or an amendment or anything, you know, about the feasibility of that. Doesn't sound like, I don't know, doesn't sound like a good idea to me to do that. But again, I, you know, I, I did want to point out that we are narrowing Balls Drive between Park and Lynn from 36 feet down to 30 feet. So the residences on the south side of Balls Drive within that block will have more separation between their, their structures and, and the trail. Right?
There'd be several feet of space between the property line and the inside edge of the blacktop on the trail. And I think we measured approximately six feet.
And again, I, I do have concerns about that crosswalk being at the end of the curve. It's got some good points, has some, some points that do concern me as well. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Counsel, caution. This is a city-initiated project which requires six out of seven votes to pass by our city charter. So it'll need six out of seven votes. If there's no further discussion, the the motion is before us. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we go to the I have a public hearing on Ardent, A-R-D-N-T Mills Truck Loading Silo and Pipe Variance. I will caution counsel again, on the variance portion tonight will require six out of seven votes since we are passing a variance. John, welcome to the meeting. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. We have a little bit of unusual step today with the public hearing before the city council related to this variance request. The reason we're doing that is more caution area. When we sent out the original public hearing notice, we did get a number of them back that were undelivered. So we wanted to make another attempt at public hearing. So it's kind of the, long story short, why we have that before you tonight. But the project that we're looking at involves two action items tonight, and that is for Ardent Mills. I think y'all know where that's located, at the old Conagra Building at Highway 61 and the Vermillion Falls area. What's being proposed is to put a new truck loading and grain storage facility at about this location here. The building right here is their existing truck loading facility that would be removed. And the new facility would be in this location. The facility itself would be about 105 feet tall. It would have about a 25-foot loading area and then an 80-foot stack on top of that. When you take a look at the complex over here, the height up to this portion of the mill is about 205 feet. So essentially, this complex would be about half the height as you're taking a look at it from this location. The two items that we have before us tonight are a variance. Because this is located within the Shoreland District, there is a 35-foot height maximum limit within that, that district for buildings. This would be in excess of that. And then a site plan for the construction of the building itself. We did have this before planning commission last week, had a public hearing before them as well. Did have one resident speak, had some questions concerning truck traffic and lighting of the area. And the planning commission did recommend unanimous approval of both actions, bringing this for you tonight. So a little bit of what the plant would look like itself. This is a similar type of facility they have elsewhere. This is what it would look like here with the 80-foot stack on top, the truck area on the bottom, and that's not necessary. So that's what we have before you tonight are these actions. We are recommending approval of both. With the variance aspect of it, taking a look at the existing facility being much less and having a limited impact from the sight lines, we're comfortable recommending approval of that. Along with the variance, we did rec, we did notify the Department of Natural Resources, and we have not received any comment back from them at this point. So this is a public hearing. You can open it up at this time, or I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for that presentation. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this, to this subject? The variance and site plan for Ardent Mills Truck Loading Silo. I know if we have any questions, Mr. Richter here is from Ardent Mills. So if we have any questions later, he's here. If not, I will close the public hearing. Okay, counsel, let's bring this to counsel. The site plan, and let's, first of all, let's deal with the variance. Let's talk about the variance. Councilmember Bolzannick?
Yes, John, you mentioned you hadn't heard back from, I'm sorry, is it at the DNR?
At the DNR, correct, councilmember.
All right, so are we putting the cart before the horse here? What, I mean, we're asking for a variance.
Sure.
There are height restrictions, blah, 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 this and that, so forth. We go ahead and pass this, and then we find out after the fact that the DNR says no. Can they just outright say no? Or is there an appeal process? How muddy can this get?
Sure. Councilmember, with the Shoreland ordinance, the council has the final decision, the final discretion on granting variances. We are obligated to notify the DNR of the action. They have the opportunity, if they choose to do so, to take, to take us to, to court on that. Those are very rare circumstances that has not happened in my tenure here, that they've indicated or have taken that type of action. That would be a pretty unusual action for them to take. So I, I feel confident considering the existing location of the mill and how this facility corresponds to the existing facility, that that shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
On the variance, councilmember Schultz?
John, this is probably a rhetorical question. Why do we have a Shoreland ordinance that restricts height to 35 feet? And we've got a 200-foot facility?
That's an interesting question, councilmember.
Grandfathered in, maybe?
Yeah, that one's grandfathered in. It's been around there for about 160 years, so that might be part.
One of the oldest mills in our state.
That might be part of it. But generally, when you're taking a look at the shoreline, you're looking at the Mississippi River and some of the wild, natural areas. And so there's a limitation on the, on the scale of buildings next to river areas. But considering you've got some mills like this one, which were incumbent upon having the, the water in the falls, you do have these situations that come up.
On the variance, is there a motion? Councilmember Brock makes a motion to approve the variance. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Bolzannick. Further discussion? Councilmember Alaji.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, or if the site manager wants to answer. My understanding from reading the, what I, what I see here is that we have a, the commission minutes is that we expect this to impact positively. The traffic flow of trucks in the area, we have trucks that they have very few places they can go, I totally understand. And so they, they park in places that, in ways that sometimes catch the residents' attention. Can we quantify the improvement in traffic that we expect?
Sure. Kevin, if you'd like to address that, that would be best.
Please come to the podium, Kevin, give your name and, and representing Ardent Mills for the record. Thank you, and welcome to the meeting, Kevin. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you for having me here. Microphone's a little bit low for me, but I'll bend down to talk to it.
Sure.
I'm Kevin Richter. I'm part of Ardent Mills. I'm part of their engineering team that they have here. So there's me and a few other engineers that are all working together for this project. And Legacy Conagra Mills is, they've actually built structures like these at, at one of their facilities, one, one of them is Alton, Illinois. And that's, that's a picture that was, that was pictured before. And they've been able to improve their truck traffic because they're having similar issues. So the multiple benefits that we would get by having a structure like this is, number one, if you notice the silo, it's going to be hard to miss, the 80-foot silo on top. That's actually has the capacity to hold all the feed that the mill would make over the entire weekend. So we're hoping that we're able to reduce truck loading on weekends. We don't want to say we're going to eliminate them, but we, we can probably say that there is going to be a significant reduction to trucks that need to load over the weekends. So now you have an issue of consolidating all of those trucks over a seven-day period that we're going to be doing over a five-day period. What we have here with this system is almost a gravity loading system because it's all going to be above it and it's all going to be taken down into that screw and taken into the truck. The capacity of the loading time increase, I mean, it depends on where you say the loading time is right now. But I would say there is a significant increase in loading time. So that's going to reduce your truck queuing. And we're hoping that we're going to be able to get most of the trucks loaded, hopefully during first and second shift for feed trucks. We don't want to eliminate our possibilities of saying that we, we're, of saying that we're not going to load on third shift. There, there still is those times and situations where we're going to need to do that. But we're going to try and eliminate to first and second shift for Monday through Friday.
Sure. And just to be clear, Your Honor, I mean, certainly, as a wonderful functioning business here in Hastings, you certainly have the right to operate your business, you know, within the code as you always have. You know, much, much, much appreciate, you know, towards the hours you have and stuff and such. So, so thank you for that. I, I guess I just want to, want to give a heads up. I also understand that as the business, we hope, gets more and more successful and as it, as it increases its productivity and reduces those wait times, it may very well be that it's also possible to move, add more trucks and move, and move more things through. And, and I, and I just want to make sure that folks who are watching and listening understand that that can be an indirect secondary impact that comes from here. Which just leads me to my final comment, which is that I'm, I'm aware that you're in conversations with city staff regarding the wait times of those trucks and where they park and where they go. And I just really appreciate that. We do have some residents that are concerned. Know that you folks are concerned as well and that you want to do, you know, be a good neighbor. Thank you for all you're already doing to make that transaction just work better for everybody because you guys deserve to operate as, you know, a perfectly profitable and wonderful business here in, in Hastings. We welcome you, really appreciate that. Also appreciate all you're doing to be a good neighbor.
I think, I know I've had communications with the facility manager here at Hastings, and he's, has said nothing but great things about working with them and trying to be very involved into the community. And that's some of the visions and values that they're really trying to instill into this new company is just being a part of the community. And Hastings is one of our very high priority mills where we want to keep continually making it better and keep investing into it as long as, and we're hoping to keep a good relationship with, with you guys.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
As long as Kevin's up there, I figure I'll ask this question. Now, this is a drive-through for the trucks, obviously, then, right?
Yes.
And will it still face east to west then? Like, I'm assuming the building does now, so it does keep the lights from shining into the neighborhood's, you know, backyard?
Yes. So I think this, this building, this shows it best. Our projected is probably slightly west of this actual projection right now. And we're going to build it adjacent to the railroad tracks, so in the same direction. So if you're thinking of truck patterns, the trucks are going to most likely come in on 18th Street. They're going to come in here and they're going to be able to just pull straight through here, load their truck, and then pull out on 18th Street as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, on the variance request. Is there any further questions? In the matter of full disclosure, I have a twin brother who works for Ardent Mills, but he does not have any material interest in this particular plant. He's the plant manager with Ardent Mills in Kenosha, Wisconsin. But I want, in the matter of full disclosure, I want to give that out. Okay, we have the, the motion before us on the variance request. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion prevails. To the site plan, counsel, I need a motion. Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. To the site plan, is there any further discussion to the site plan? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next, counsel, we have a, a resolution, a site plan, Fleagle's Lawn and Garden Expansion at North Frontage Road. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. This is a picture of Fleagle's Lawn and Garden on North Frontage Road here. The red area represents an addition that they're proposing for the back of the building. You may note in the picture here, there are three other buildings around the site that would be taken down to accommodate this expansion, which would be about 30 by 60, as shown here. Within your packet have also put some elevations of what the building would look like. The planning commission did review this at their last meeting, did recommend our approval of this on a seven to zero vote. We did not have anyone speak for or against it at the meeting. So looking at the site itself, it's a rather simple site plan for us. There really is no grading changes that occur within the site itself. Visually, it's going to be back towards the rear of the building. We do have our architectural standards. We do have the opportunity to, to take into consideration the existing building when implementing those standards on additions. And so because this portion of the building is not very visible from North Frontage Road, back towards the rear, we're acceptable to the materials that are similar to the building as they are now, which is primarily metal. This is a building, a picture of the site here. This is a picture here of what the building would look like that would be put on the back. This is kind of a rendering of the existing building and what you would see with that storage area. So I can stand for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that very much, counsel. We have this before us, so what's your wish? Councilmember Schultz?
First of all, make a motion to approve. And I think Randy needs to get an award for sitting here from, all the way from the beginning of the meeting.
Is that part of the motion?
No.
No. Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to accept the site plan, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you. Next, is there comments from the audience? Is there any comments from the audience this evening? Okay? Seeing none, council announcements, any announcements? Councilmember Schultz?
Actually, I, I do have one. I sent an email to, I think I sent it out to probably the members of the Utilities Committee today. There was an article in yesterday's Star Tribune in the Business section about the Comcast merger with Time Warner and the discussion that it's highly possible that the FCC may not approve of the merger simply because Comcast has, has had so many issues and complaints. So we'll have to wait and see what happens as we move through the spring. But I thought that was an interesting twist on all the, the, the resolution and all the work we did last month on what may happen to our cable system.
Thank you for that update, councilmember. Any other announcements? Councilmember Bolzannick?
Yes, I will be at a meeting Thursday morning of the DCC. That's the Dakota Communications Board of Directors. That's our 911 call center. So I'll be representing the city for that. I'm on the board.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, counsel, I just have a few announcements. Planning commission will be meeting on Monday, February 23rd at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. The Finance Committee will be meeting on Monday, March 9th at 6:00 PM at City Hall. And the Hastings Tastings, an annual event that we all, I know most of us enjoy or run there, is going to be held on Tuesday, March 3rd at Sees to benefit Hastings Family Service. So again, Hastings Tastings on Tuesday, March 3rd. And our next regular city council meeting is scheduled for March 2nd, Monday, March 2nd at 7:00 PM. We have no further business before us. A motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Brox. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.